Thank you, everybody, and welcome to the Government Planning Committee meeting on Tuesday the 12th of September 2023. My name is John Heaney, and I'll be chairing the meeting. The chair is uninvited, but he will be detained somewhere else. And just a few things on housekeeping, please can have their phones turned off or on silent. And we're not expecting a fire alarm or a fire test of any sort. So the fire exits are in front of us and behind us. And at all, it's for anyone who don't know, it's just as we come in the door. No councilors' apologies.
We've had apologies from councillors Hussein, Palmer and Graham.
We've moved to the meeting of the last meeting of the committees. No comments? 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 Thank you. Okay, then they were approved. There's no councillor's declaration of interest. Thank you. Public speaking time. There's no public here at the moment, so we'll carry on with the meeting. To review planning applications by Milton Keynes Council. The first one is fire lane. Dawson Retail brand Dawson Road. Demolition of small office building replacement by storage unit. Any comments? No comments? Thank you. Item five two. This is the academy. Relation of working of conditions of seven pedestrian opening hours. Conditions eight, emergency exit, seeking amendments for opening hours. Pedestrian gates use in emergency. Conditions six, used only as a school, not for hire. And condition twelve, opening hours attached. But before and for the school, anti-darts IT facilities. Any comment? This has been here once before, and we did make a note comment on it once before.
No comment.
No comment.
I would like to make a comment, I guess. The neighbours are quite close to the school, and the school has expanded in the recent times, which has had quite an impact on the neighbourhood. While it is outside my direct area because I'm representing Funnis Stratford, I'm well aware of the situation now because I speak to residents. And their concern is that if we were to relax the conditions of the use, especially of the unsfunctional outside of the main activities of the school, which is for the pupils, it would cause even more, not disturbance, but noise, more cars, parking where they shouldn't park, and general impact on the neighbours' peace and quietness. That's the only comment I might pass on.
See, we can't say everyone's peace and quiet, but we can say we're concerned. But noting that we're concerned about parking issues that could arise.
Provide, yeah, and I know that they have ample parking space now because they've just created a lot of parking around the school, on the school grounds. So I would say as long as the noise is in accordance with whatever the official guidelines are from MKCC, and the parking is on the school property, I think, you know, would be.
So best to go, no comment like we did last time. Let me see, let me go from there. Is everyone happy with that? Do those in favour? Thank you, that's unanimous. That's the end of planning. Item six, to review an update on the report on progress of the town council far and board in the general plan. I believe it's only just gone on the site now. Just noting because it's massive for us to go through tonight. So I think we need to just note that.
Yeah, if I may, yeah, the report literally only came in yesterday. You know, suggest noting for now and formulate an action plan for consideration at a later stage.
Sure.
May I? Here in all that, thank you, Will. I'm very excited that we've got this report now, and there's some really interesting stuff in there, I think, gives us something in the immediate term and the near term to approve. We originally had a climate change committee, which we then turned into a task force and attached to this committee. Question is, how would we like to tackle this report? Do we want to have a specific task force with a subset of councillors and representatives? Or are we happy to discuss this as a separate discussion item in a future meeting? What's everybody's preference?
Can anybody have anything on this? What do you suggest?
My suggestion is to have a small task force, like we originally said, with a couple of representatives from this group and from the offices, so we can actually go through it in detail and then come back with a combined proposal for this committee. So instead of just Will or Delia coming back with an officer's recommendation, I would like to, because it's quite chunky, like the sick of all and the brief that thing deserves a little bit more focus and attention.
Yeah, well, you should have it all, councillors, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Yeah. Give all councillors an option.
So what I propose, I think that's a correct way to do this in this city, isn't it? I propose that we create a task force and open it up to all the councillors on the council overall. Perhaps that's something that Will or you as a chair can do to just email everybody and say we're setting up this task force. I would love to make it time bound, so it's not going to drag out, so we can actually make some progress, that'd be really great. Sorry, that was not formulated very well.
Yeah, that's okay.
You've got the process.
Well, I've got the gist of it.
And then we'll put that out to all the councillors. We've got a second for that.
Thank you very much.
All those in favour? Okay, Will.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, to reserve an update on the maintenance of football pitches at Milton Keynes.
Well, yeah, so obviously there's a report within your pack. It decided that the Finance Committee on the 22nd of August to let the pitches to Tallow Football Club. Since that decision, formal agreement's been finalized and signed. The pitches have now been marked out, three pitches of different sizes for different age groups. The goals are now in and have been erected, and the pitches were renewed for the first time over the weekend just passed. Our contract for sports ground services will be maintaining them to a high standard. The details of that is in the report. Yeah, and all seems to be going well.
Thank you, Will.
Can I ask questions?
Any questions?
Well, just from what I'm saying, first of all, it's great that we've got this done and it's now being used, that's amazing. My question's really, why are we not able to use our new environment team for this? Why do we have to hire an outside specialist?
Because there's quite specialist equipment that's required, that's expensive.
Oh, okay.
Usually they're cut with different type of mower, a rotary mower rather than a the sort of mower that we've got. Also, you need things like inverted drain equipment, you need a tractor in order to pull that and use that on the pitches, which is all information, all equipment that we don't currently have.
By maybe, yeah.
Maybe in the future, that might be something that we consider, but we don't have that equipment to do it at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
Are you on the odds? Okay, Will, thanks very much for that. Item eight, this will be back to Will, to receive an update on report on the council delivery of landscaping services mentioned from the 4th of September.
Thank you, Chair, Steve. You've got an update report in your pack. Since our last meeting, three new landscape operatives have started. They've received various training and induction. We had them for a three-week period before the contract started. The devolution contracts now started, started last Monday, 4th of September. The team have already been out mowing and doing various other landscape works. Got some pictures of some sort of before and after examples of work that they've undertaken in your pack. Effectively, when we took control of it from the 4th of September, Serco, the previous contractor, had completed four cuts this mowing season and went partway around cut five. We've continued that cut five, and that cut five will be finished by the end of this week. They'll then start the cycle again. We've now got all of the information on the website, and there's the ability to report via our report app on the website. Residents can also call in or email in if they've got any issues that they want to report to us, and we will get back to them. Included in the pack is also a landscape work plan, which gives the details of the way that we're going to be treating the different elements of the work, like the mowing and mowing. It's split down into summer work and winter work, and that's included in the pack. The only other thing really to say is we'll be updating the committee each meeting with regards to progress with the mowing schedule during the summer and the winter bedwork schedule during the winter months. Also, with regards to the level of inquiries that we've received, the numbers that we've got in progress, the numbers that we've resolved, and details of any specific problems or issues we've come up against. Just would like to hear from councillors whether there's any other information that you'd like reported to this committee on a regular basis.
Yeah, I'll first. So I was going to say on the report, I have seen that, just with regards to user experience. Problem is on the landscaping page, would it be better to have a report, you know, report app link on the homepage so that it came? And then essentially, in terms of managing more work, I don't think it's a good idea to ask people to ring in email and report problem because they, I think we're creating work for ourselves. So I think we should be adopting a mobile slash digital first service. And, you know, I think just having the, the, I think if people, if we just put the four three there, people are just going to say, I would phone or email rather than kind of go off the app. And I think what may end up happening is the work gets done twice because somebody's already given the details. And then somebody, one of our staff members, has got to key in. So it's just a question whether we think that's right.
Okay. Yeah, fair point. I think, you know, what we plan to do is, as inquiries come through, if, per se, an inquiry comes through on the telephone, it'll be input at that point through the app. So, you know, the app will be the log of all of the work. But yeah, point taken that perhaps we don't need three methods. I mean, on the website, there's a very clear reporting function. You press that and it will immediately take you through. But we appreciate that, you know, some people like to email into the council, some people like to phone in. Not everyone's got access to the internet.
Yeah, I just worry that, I appreciate that. I just worry that we have a duty to keep costs down, and we keep costs down by not wasting resources. And if someone's typed an email, they can actually fill out a form, which then goes directly into the, so from my point of view, it allows the office team to focus on chasing up anything that's not been done rather than inputting things. So I think wherever possible, residents should be directed to completing those forms first. Actually, I think that this is an approach that other principal councils use. They try to limit the kind of number of calls they get.
Excellent.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, it's great to see the team is now in action. It's been a long time coming, so it's really great to see. And the pictures of before and after, appreciated because it really shows the difference that we can make in the community. Will we be able to put this, feature it even, on the new newsletter?
I think we will feature landscape quite heavily in the newsletter over the coming months.
If we include the areas in the schedule, or at least promote the website, like Ethan said, I'm trying to think of what would that push people to the website, put it right on the homepage, and get them to submit anything on the forms, that'd be great. But I think the bit I would stress in the newsletter and perhaps on the website is to explain to our residents or the members of the community that this is what we are responsible for. This is what MK Council is responsible for. And make sure that we promote all the great stuff that we're doing for the community. Not to put anybody else's work, you know, not to talk down on somebody else's work, but to really promote what we are doing for our local community and the impact that has. And I think the one thing I would like to see in the reporting is the environmental impact. So putting it into the whole general objectives we have for our council, one of them is the environment. So that's missing for me in the reporting. I don't know how, but maybe we can do that as part of the task force. I'm really struggling to speak today, sorry guys. As part of the task force, perhaps we can look at the carbon audit plan and the environmental plan and see how we can tie them up, just so they can cross-pollinate, if you pardon the intentional pun there. That's all, Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Eamon?
No, sorry, I'll do it. No.
Yeah, following on from that, I told Will earlier that I got some good feedback when the guys done more, you know. Someone said, MK Council got some new bloods doing the job properly. I said, no, they belong to us. They didn't realise that we took over, but I was very impressed with what they seen to start with. So let's hope we can keep this up and get more good feedback all the time.
Absolutely.
If I could just add something to what we said, what Ben Will said about the newsletter. I think the feature in the next newsletter will be about us taking on the service. And the point about helping people to understand what these are responsibilities and what is Milton Keynes Council's responsibility is actually very difficult because it's not straightforward for us, let alone them. And on the lakes state in particular, I've just come from the Circumtime Port Steering Group meeting where I've been talking to them about landscaping. And the lakes is particularly complex because there are the regen areas that are not included. There's hard landscaping that appears to be mixed up with soft landscaping, which creates problems and things like that. And there's still discussion going on about whether some parts of the contract, some areas might be removed from the contract, so that discussion is still going on. I think we're probably going to resist that because if it affects the revenue that the town council would receive, we wouldn't see areas with it. And so I think it's quite complex to explain to people exactly who does what where.
Ethan?
Excellent. Thank you very much. May I suggest that, first of all, thank you for explanation, as I can see that by this and the conversation we've had the last few months. I would like us to make an effort to reduce the opportunities for people to be confused and just call us and, you know, waste our time and us having to explain something very complex. It just takes a lot of time, especially for officers who'll be at the end of the phone or on email chain. So if we can maybe visualize it and do the map and color stuff in and just try and make it easier for people to understand, I think the biggest message to take away from this is this is complex, there's a mix of responsibilities here, and clearly signpost stuff. I mean, as a member of the community, I would I would just go like, this is nonsense, I don't know who to talk to, so I'm just going to file it off every which way I can, and then I'm going to send an angry email to whoever I can to see if it can be progressed. So anything we can do to get ahead of that and make it as clear and concise as possible, that'd be really great.
Ethan?
So I was going to say, with regards to Newton Leaves is coming up to the end of its development. I think next three to six months, all the housing should be finished, and I think that they may well start elements of the adoption process. Part of Newton Leaves under management, part of it is not. Would, is there capacity to take on part of Newton Leaves? And what would we do, what we, what we ought, would we have to consider? Because obviously it will become part of the public space.
I think, I mean, given time, obviously, there'd be some sort of notice period before that would occur. Yes, absolutely, we've got the capacity. You know, mine might mean an increase to manpower. Might mean an increase to the, you know, amount of equipment that we've currently got. But yes, you know, there would be capacity to take it on.
I think the equipment that we've got was very much determined by the areas that we know that we're looking after at the moment. So if we, when we get one field back, if we get one field back, and if we get some larger areas, we might need to look at equipment again at that point. So there are things we would need to look at on that. But yeah, we've definitely got that ability to do that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Item nine, to report on the income expenditure against budget, which falls within the remit of this committee.
I don't have any questions or comments.
Okay, Ethan, any questions?
Can you, can you note this?
Thank you. Noted. Item ten, allotments matters. We'll be pulling apart this off the agenda tonight to deal with ponds and whatever, but we will be carrying on with the other part of it because we'll be looking for further instruction and legal matters about the ponds that people are putting in.
If I can, Chair. Yes, effectively, we've had a number of representations in relation to the agenda item around ponds on allotment side, on allotment plots, which have flagged up valid points and suggestions. Officers' advice would be that that item be deferred, pending supplementary information being added to the report to cover possible risk mitigation measures, which the council could put in place if it were to allow ponds on allotment plots in the future. The recommendation would be to defer that item until the next meeting.
Probably, sorry. We've actually already dealt with that. Have you spoke to them about it?
Yeah.
Believe ducks quacking away all night. That's what it was all about, the noise, the chickens. I think it was the pond. Only needs a little pond for a few ducks. We fenced off around six foot fence. Kids fall in there.
Excellent.
I'll propose that we follow the officer's declaration.
Okay, anyone second that? Thank you, Ethan. We'll chill that to the next meeting. Now, the recommendation is increase of allotment against Joe from the 24th of October 2024 from thirty three pounds plus square meter to thirty five pounds plus square meter.
Still chickens in.
Yeah. I'll go with it, so. So, shall we propose that we put that through? Have we got, have you been, Eamon proposed it? Yeah, have we got a second done? That's excellent. All those in favour? Everyone agrees? Have the increases gone through? Right. Do you consider any of any new priorities? Anticipate additional spending which may arise during 24, 25, prior to preparation of the town council's annual budget?
So this is an opportunity for councillors to bring up anything that I think needs to be considered in the budget as we're in or coming close to the budget setting period.
It might, if I may, Chair, it might be helpful for councillors to look at this year's delivery plan and think about whether there are items that you'd like in next year's delivery plan, which could then be considered. And we haven't changed overarching since the beginning. And I don't know whether that's something that members would like to, you know, to consider, and that's perhaps something for full council to look at. But, you know, if we know what delivery plan we're working towards, it's much easier for us to be budgeting. And I think there's a few areas that, you know, perhaps could be looked at that fall within the remit of this committee, specifically whether we want to spend any more on landscaping and biodiversity and, in due course, the carbon audit that you've looked at tonight. You may want to consider aspects of that for inclusion in the budget. Maybe not even if for inclusion in the budget next year, but perhaps for inclusion in a longer term financial plan. So it's just an opportunity now to ask councillors to talk to us before we put the draft together.
Excellent, Chair. Thank you, Julia. Yes, I think that's a really good point, especially about the audit. And I'm not sure whether you were here when we talked about the audit.
I wasn't, no, absolutely.
We basically said we're going to do a task force, we're going to open it up to everybody on the council, and then we can focus on that with an action plan of, you know, this can do almost immediately and then hopefully segue into the financial planning as well. And obviously, we'll come to this council and go through the motions. But I would say it is probably a good idea for us to carve out a little corner of the budget going forward. It's like, this is how much, perhaps in percentage terms, that we think we can afford to spend, or we should spend on tackling climate change based on the carbon audit. So it's all kind of visible to our communities to say, okay, we declared the emergency, we've got our audit, we've got an action plan, short, medium, long term. There's a budget allocation, which actually then nails it into the wood, so to speak, to say, sorry, my audio is so foggy off today. It really makes it whole, and it actually doesn't just greenwash or It really makes it whole, and it actually doesn't just greenwash or palelipsos, it actually says, there's a budget, there's a plan, and there's an independent objective for it, so I think we can, we should consider doing that.
Okay. Anybody else?
So, I think that we, there are a number of issues that we perhaps need to look at over the coming year. I think we probably need to have some kinds of review of all of our kind of facilities and, you know, how, because I think it's, they've all been open for many years, we probably need to be thinking, you know, is there an enhanced level of maintenance that kind of needs to be done over the kind of next few years, few years, and see if that needs to be built into our plan. I know Garett Newton Lees have filled in, we were previously talking about having some kind of cob out, even the turrets, and it's just with regards to that. I think that with regards to our public toilets, we need to have discussions with partners, with partner authorities about the long-term issues facing the toilets, and whether the council can continue to kind of maintain them, given that they are well overdue for a complete refurbishment. And so I think, you know, lots of, lots of work down, I think that perhaps we should do some kind of feasibility on what the provision could be, that, you know, maybe what would a small refurbishment look like, what would a complete refurbishment look like, and what is, so we can actually spend, we can look at different levels of what we could possibly do.
Yeah, well, moving on from what Ethan was saying, to build a decent, good public toilet, obviously the town council would play some towards it, and have it looked after properly, you'd have security and everything in there. So we put that out there, this is something that they should be looking at, because those toilets are old, and even refurbishing, what they can look much better, they're old and really past it. And so with a new build, they could build a good, decent toilet, good, everything in there, that it works and, public, you know, so there's plenty of land there now to do that.
And just to remind members that toilets don't actually fall in the remit of this committee, but it's important to be discussing all the issues that we're thinking about in terms of the future. The town, you may recall from the reports you've heard from me about the town deal, that the town deal board have been looking at provision of public toilet facilities as part of the redevelopment that we hope to see in the town centre. So that's already on the table and being discussed, there is no resolution at this stage as to what provision might be, but it's very much there in the minds of the people who are working on the development brief and so forth.
Yeah, well, moving on to the town deal, they've got to start and have things on the go by 2026, haven't they?
Well, the funding for the different projects, it's all specific, it's project specific, so the funding comes at different times for the different projects, so it's not possible to say what the overall, what, I think it's, when it will, but the evolving developments and, for example, is likely to be a longer-term project if the fund develops. So the funding is drawn down at different stages on different projects.
And that's our 22 million, isn't it?
Yes, it's just.
And there's a separate 2 million for Bletchley and Fennies Street, which we spoke about before.
There's, that's the public realm improvement project, yeah, which is, there'll be an update on where we are with the public realm improvement project at the next board meeting, which is, I think, on the 28th of September, there'll be an update for town councils after that.
You do.
And for a matter of interest, how long from a brand-new toilet, like it was, how long, how many years do you expect them to last then?
Fifteen.
Well, current toilets must be older than that.
Oh, they're old enough, they're, they're old enough.
That's the first thing I voted on, I don't know how many years I've been on the council, I don't remember. You on from the beginning? Yeah.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming.
I got beyond because I repaired drains for the council, and there are loads of problems.